But amazing.
The it's long term, well, it's not same balls and test, the central coaches, they're very true. And did attend the wasn't really good.
Down there. Goodness.
Yeah. Yeah, we're ready to go. Yes, you rock and roll.
All right. Mc call order. Do for school district board directors meeting for June thirtieth, twenty five. And um. To get started, I want to know if we have any guest or public comment. Seeing we got some pretty rowdy folks in the audience tonight, so I was questioning that, so. Um, okay, so I was moving to consent agenda. And so for consent agenda, there's a number of different items on that list for tonight. Um, we can approve this all as one consent agenda, or we can break some items out. It's if the board wanted to do so, a specific in particular that you guys wanted to take a look at. So first item is the board minutes from the June second meeting. June second was the regularly scheduled meeting for the first part of June. And the last few years, we have had a second meeting in June to approve the budget. So the physical district can start the fiscal year, which starts tomorrow, July first. So board minutes, policy J C C F, which is the one talking about headlights. E D D funding proposal and applications. Uh, switch signatures on district bank accounts.
That I pass out a motion within my just that way.
Say what?
There was that one.
You want to break that out, or?
No, it's fine. I just asked out a motion in the report that.
Oh, okay. So that's basically a, we'll go through these multiple, but that's basically switching the signers on the items and stuff. Yes, as of now, this will be your today's Mr. Jackson's last official.
This is directed. Big checks tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yay.
Uh, and then the last item on there is certification of the election results. And so there's an official report from the elections office with the final tally and those numbers that we got there, so. Um, and then just tell me one more time, so in the in what you handed out this evening, there's the sign up sheet. I was doing good with the first packet when he goes.
Sorry.
Well, add into us. That's just cool. I don't know where this.
Oh, yeah, our library copy machine off the line.
So what do you guys, what do you guys want? Do you want to approve all these in a consent agenda? Or is there anything in particular you want to break out? Is there anything in here you guys want to ask about? At least most of it's pretty standard items.
I don't have an issue with just doing it all at once. You buy them both. Consider that stands.
So I'd be willing to accept a motion for consent agenda.
You don't move. Except the consent agenda is present.
Yeah, we have a second, second. Further discussion, is there anything in here you guys want to discuss further? Okay, all right, take a vote on this. All is in favor of approving the consent agenda, sign it by my seat. I, 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 good, any opposed? You're none, so this. Now we can move into the financial reports, and this is Turner.
Uh, okay, I passed out a packet here. Uh, we're just gonna deal with the stapled piece right now. Uh, typical, you've seen this all year. Um, we're looking at a four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollar ending fund balance. Um, so a little better than I was projecting earlier in the year, but still a little lower. I'll take it. I'll take an increase over what I thought. Um. That's that. And then I had some questions about the preschool promise grant and how those funds were allocated and used. So I just thought it would be a great time to go through the whole budget and things on what that looked like. Um, it's on the last page of this, if anybody is interested. And when I say go through it, I'm not going to read line by line. But essentially, that was a three hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred dollar grant for this year to be used solely for preschool. Um, they do allow you to cover your operating costs with that grant money. And so the way we figure that, because we're all in one building, is as a percentage of students. So we received eighteen preschool promise slots. And I just took that as a percentage of our student enrollment. Obviously, we have to kind of do an average because our student enrollment goes up and down. Um, and it came out to about four point seven six percent of our students. And so within all of these categories at the bottom, um, we just apply four point seven six to our expenditures. And then that way preschool promises self-contained pays for itself. Any questions on that? Um, other than, I will say, other than transportation, transportation is a specific grant amount within the grant for each child. So that's just a specific amount.
But with this, the transportation can't be covered.
Transportation can be covered, and we did transport preschool students. And it's not covered in a how many students you transported. It's covered for, if you offer transportation to our preschool promise eligible ones, then we get transportation for everybody. That makes sense.
So what?
Everybody is.
A basis. What do they, what do they think about driving time or mileage or?
Um, they just give you a set amount of kit. So it's just a set amount for kid, and I didn't bring what that is. But if you offer transportation, they say we'll give you X number of dollars. No matter whether they use transportation. Yep.
A vision here, here, that number was sometimes.
Yeah. Well.
Boy, you got till midnight, and I don't care anymore.
Eleven hundred dollars.
How much?
Eleven hundred dollars per student. Um, and so, and I shouldn't say that percentage is applied to everything, obviously. Um, like child screenings and assessments, those are per, that is a specific cost that we bought for preschool promise. Um. For assessments that we have to perform on those students. Um, furniture and fixtures are actually for the additional classroom. Travel is actually for a training that we went to. So like supplies and materials is actual preschool specific supplies and materials.
So how do you, how do you budget for the preschool and you don't have the availability of this grant? What it just, it's just part of.
Um, and before this year, essentially, um, we charged for preschool. We charged a limited amount just because that's what the community can tolerate.
Everybody else.
And then the general, the general fund had to pay for it. And so we had some serious discussions last year before we applied for this grant about whether we were going to be able to continue the preschool program just because of school funding and the lack, the lack of funds available.
It's a huge amount of money.
Yeah. So it really came in and saved the program essentially.
Yeah.
Allowed us to expand it and keep it going and keep it affordable for our kids.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the adjustments in the different budget amounts is just gonna make it all come out.
It's because.
Get a set amount of money in your.
Yeah, we budgeted a hundred and seventy thousand in revenue for preschool promise because we didn't know what we were gonna get. And then we got three hundred and thirty seven thousand, so it's that.
So you could kind of come in with a different number every year.
Um.
Kind of a real, kind of a real number.
Yeah, so we could have to address this. If we get additional slots, then we could have to address adopting that money, appropriate that money next year. But we don't know if we got it. We've applied, but we haven't heard.
So, yeah, we misread the stuff.
Yeah, sorry.
We're still cautiously optimistic. I guess, quick math, what's everything? Additional services, what's that add up to about her twenty five?
Um. Hundred and fifty to twenty five to thirty, uh, just over a hundred.
So basically, it's a hundred thousand dollars to.
Yeah.
Great building in addition to.
Yeah, and which is, I mean, approximately what we're spending on preschool before out of the general.
Then is this a reimbursement?
Yes.
Program.
Yep. So I claim, I'd like to say I claim every month, but at least every couple of months. Um, and I just run a report on what we've spent and apply my percentages to. So like, they pay for four point seven six percent of me and Rayanna because we have to do work for preschool promise, right? Um, I apply the percentages to the categories and hit submit.
Yeah. And that helps me with the timing of appropriation.
Yeah.
If it's a reimbursement as opposed to here's your lump sum back.
Yeah. Any other questions on Facebook box? That was kind of my big piece today.
That's good. I just appreciate you breaking it, breaking it apart, and it's good to understand how it's.
Yeah, and sorry, I didn't, I normally tell you what percent of the budget. Second. Our employee costs were um, eighty four point two percent of our general fund expenditures were associated with payroll.
So this is a new grant, what are, what are the feelings you're getting? Is this gonna be a long-term program? Is this gonna be a I've gotten on kind of, I mean, just general feeling, is this a here to stay baby?
I think, I think. I think we can travel like it's been taken. Right, all the early learning stuff is. Portland, what's the one, Portland called, we talked about that the other day. Uh, anyway, there's some, I was a model academy or something, they had some early learning deal, they're fighting over that. I don't know if the legislation came over that money or what happened there, but it wasn't something. Like, they were. This schools down the earth, it's, it's not preschool class, there's a preschool for preschool for all. And they were, they were going to operate their preschools eventually. We're good to get on this? Yeah, thank you, Joseph, for preparing this until we're all to see that. Uh, fingers crossed it's on the way officially now. The next round of funding for this.
Hopefully they give us more slots, that'd be great.
Yeah, any, anything, essentially.
Yeah.
Anything else financial, so we kept it short.
Not till later.
Yeah, yeah, we've got some stuff related budgets, all right. I'll move in next to the Pringles free board, this is Kristen Wiggly.
Okay, I'll start my report by inviting Tess Wolf up to give you guys a summer school update. Yeah, so this is our fifth, or this is our fifth year doing summer school programs at Outdofer. And this year we're serving a hundred and seven students, three K to twelfth grade. Um, we ran on two grants, but has me on though, we just lost one of our regular grants, so we're not sure what that show is going to look like for us. Uh, this program runs for four weeks, three days a week. We have P E every day, we're listed every day, and the kids get to go down to the park and pool every day. On top of that, we have free breakfast and free lunch. And then we started on June tenth, and the end was sweet until July third. Which were already so, um. We partnered with the OSU extension and four through twelve three, got to do three D printing, if so speak. And that was really great. Um, yeah, it's been a great year, and we've had all of the teachers who do it each year come back and do it, or the aides that have that come back and do it. A lot of families who've done it, hopefully years in the road, in the same research. So you guys have any questions for me about the summer special program?
How many students? How many students?
We have a hundred and seven, I know, a hundred and seven. So mostly grade school or?
Yeah.
But we're doing three K through fifth grade is our highest. The most one, high, high school is mostly spread at Republican. Um, six through eight, they're just kind of that hiddenness, dodge, dodge, because they're about twenty of them when they all come, they're big up. Depends on the day.
Yeah.
And you guys are about done?
We're about done, and hopefully we'll find funds continuing that year to do it again. If not, we have to, maybe we'll speak eight through five. But we really like it, we want it going. We were grateful for Kristen and turning that thing this year as we were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to us.
Okay, I have lots of end of year visuals for you guys. Um, the first one we can look at is, it's really good news, it's the single cheater with the uh, discreet attendance report, discreet just meaning that there's no student names on here. Uh, so this is a cross-sectional report of our attendance from the twenty twenty two, twenty three school years to the end of the school year. Um, twenty twenty two, twenty three is the very bottom entry. Twenty twenty four is the very, twenty five is the very top. Um, so this is a monthly report comparison of how our attendance has been improving as we've implemented some attendance interventions. Um, so you will see for each school year, there is attendance reported by school and by district. So there are a little bit differences in between some of the numbers because school means K through twelve, district means every kid in our district, so preschool factors into that. That's why there's some discrepancies on numbers. Um, so we are shooting ideally to have every kid here ninety one percent or better. Every month they are in school, and this is a comparison of our overall average attendance. So we had, um, in twenty twenty two, twenty three, um, I'm just looking at the top line due for school, because that's what my reporting is K twelve. Um, we had two months where we were at eighty eight point two five attendance averaging December of twenty twenty two, eighty nine point oh nine average attendance in February of twenty three. In twenty twenty three, twenty four, that's the middle chart. We had two months where we dipped below, um, actually, three as we should be above ninety one percent, so January, February, February, March. And, um, May, we're all below that ninety one percent threshold. And then this year, we have grown, we only had one month, which was February of twenty twenty five, where we were at eighty nine point nine nine percent attendance. So that was something that I was really happy to see when I did this report, that our, um, interventions, which are school-wide celebrations, monthly attendance, or sorry, weekly attendance, team meetings and individualized, um, attendance interventions for kids who are really dipping below are working for us. So very uplifting. Any questions on attendance?
I just. Nice, appreciate you making, breaking it out. So I think it makes it those trends, so it's kind of like that.
That winter, the winter is hard for everybody.
Yes. Yes. But it's the regular attenders.
Regular attenders.
Yeah, what if?
So that's just the title, so regular attenders meet, right, a, let me start over. A regular attender means a child who's attending school ninety one percent to a hundred percent of the time. That's what's considered a regular contender. So our goal is to have all of our students be regular tenders at super school.
So is this our percent of students that meet that threshold? The second.
Um. You, you should only be looking at the, the top, the overall attendance, yeah. That second box, I did something wrong in that second box, so yeah, only look at the top.
I'm already doing it. Nothing to see here.
Nothing. I just pushed the wrong button. It's the colored box.
Okay.
Colored box.
You didn't, is it possible, so it's February, obviously has fewer days that factor in.
It does, because if you miss, if you missed one of twenty eight, that's a bigger percentage than one of thirty.
Always gonna be.
February is hard, yeah.
Turkey.
Yeah.
Because of where it falls in the year, and just. Seems the lead here gets them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's day twenty nine helps us out, which kind of checks out in February of twenty twenty four. Yeah. So in the green, doesn't even know.
Oh, yeah.
Still below.
See a trend.
Yeah.
That could be one good, one good.
Okay, I will move into my next report, which is end of year state testing. I also did a three-year cross-sectional report for you. So you have to pay attention to the little dates up in the top left corner. So we have this year's state test results, twenty twenty four, twenty five, in comparison to twenty twenty three, twenty four, and twenty twenty two, twenty three. Unfortunately, it's annoying to look at because O S A S compiles these charts based on like which class had results in the soonest. So you can't do like a line by line comparison. Um, for example, when we're looking at twenty twenty four, twenty five, the O S A S grade six math is at the top. And it also is for twenty three, twenty four, but the high schools or the high school results in twenty two, twenty three came in first, so high school's at the top. So just watch yourself when doing that, um. So before we really dive into those, I also printed out the, um, achievement standards for the state of Oregon. That's a single cheater that looks like this, so kind of have a face line to look at. Um, so you have grades three through high school, grades three through high school. All of the grades take language arts and math, and then grades five, eight, and high school take the science test. So we want all of our kids ideally to be scoring level threes on all of these tests. Level three means that they're performing proficiently as per Oregon statewide assessment. Um.
Is that green?
So yes, so then when you go back to your cross-sectional report, and map is the very first sheet that we're doing cross-sectional comparisons, um. Green is a level three, blue is a level four exceeding, yellow is level two, so they're approaching the benchmark. And then red is a level one, they're both significantly below the benchmark. So I've in the past talked about, um, statewide indicators. So we can look at grade eight mathematics for twenty twenty four, twenty five. We had twenty six, and that is the third one from the bottom on twenty four, twenty five. So we had twenty six students take this test, and out of our eighth graders, two percent scored level, or two students, so eight percent of the class scored a level four exceeding. We had zero students score in the level three range. Three students scored twos, and then twenty one students scored level ones. In comparison to last year, we had, um, fifteen testers, so that's sixty percent scored level ones in comparison to this year's eighty one percent. Twenty seven percent scored level two in comparison to this year's twelve percent. And then nobody scored level fours, but we did have thirteen percent score level threes. And then eighth grade mathematics at the bottom is, is at the bottom of twenty two, twenty three. So we had seventy percent of our eighth graders for level one, fifteen percent for level two, and fifteen percent for level three. So it's pretty not so fun data to look at for the eighth grade class.
But if you look, so that, so the eighth grade class, that's twenty twenty five is the sixth grade class of twenty two, twenty three.
Correct. So that's also interesting to look at too. Because if you look at sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, it's progressively getting worse. So what's happening? Do we have students coming out of elementary school that are really used to that contained classroom like, gee, this is what it expected to me to becoming a little more worldly by the time they're fourteen and knowing, no, this doesn't mean anything for my grade.
Like those two kids are really rotten.
Two kids are really rotten.
Again, good job. Something to change how we do, like advancing them in math? Like, do they, have they always come in a year ahead, or did they have to work into that job?
They get identified pretty quickly in sixth grade and bumped a year ahead if they need to. But but some of those, like, I'm not ever gonna share names at a public meeting, but when I'm looking at some of these kids, I'm like, yeah, you're gonna be in the National Honor Society, you're already in advanced math. Like, and they're scoring a level one? Is that accurate?
Well.
Is it something that's wrong with our curriculum? Like, is our curriculum not supporting the state standards? There's a lot of different questions that we've been exploring. So I'll just stick with math. Um, what we've done is we had a professional learning community in grades three through twelve that looked at our language arts and our math state testing, not just by overall average scores, but we did a cross-sectional reports of scores based on state standards. So it took us a full year to look at all of those state standards and look for holes in our state standards. So what we've done is identified some holes that are consistent for all of our kids' performance, whether they're in third grade or eleventh grade, um, so that we can, um, keep an eye on those and really hammer hard on some of those that we've been able to identify. We have also have a curriculum adoption exploration committee for math that is making progress towards eventually adopting updated curriculum for our students. Um, and then one thing that comes with new curriculum is alignment of standard prioritization between the grades. So we had four staff members get trained last, or earlier this month in aligning standards from kindergarten through twelfth grade in English language arts. So got, got trained in the process of having all of your staff look at all standards um, and mapping them out for a kid from the time of your kindergarten or the time that they graduate, to make sure that we're not missing any standards and make a plan that our staff is all on the same page of which standards get prioritized in which grade, so the kids are getting everything.
We know, um, how these scores are comparable to other schools scoring? Because they look pretty bad. How are they doing? How are other kids doing? I mean, testing in the same standards.
I would have had to give you like a fifty page report had I printed that.
Just.
But, um, I can email you guys some examples, it's pretty similar across the state. So like when you're looking at this math is easy, because this is the first page. Eighth grade is, eighth grade's an outlier, I don't know what's going on with eighth grade. But if you look at like, I don't know, grade six up at the top, actually, we're performing pretty similar to the state. There's over fifty percent of students in the state of Oregon that are not, that are performing level one on state now tests.
So is that a problem with the test, or is that a problem with? Um. I mean, is, is that indicative of the schools are teaching one thing and the state is asking for another? And we haven't gotten a feel line of that? Or why are, why are all the test scores lagging so poorly? If it's across the board and not just certain topics?
Yeah, and my opinion is like, we have legislation coming out with new bills for educators. Rapid fire, like one of them I can think of. I don't know if it's dead yet, but legislation that computer science needs, needs to be taught in every classroom. Is that a benefit for children? Absolutely it is, like computer science in the twenty first century is a huge priority. But is it something that legislation needs to prioritize when over half of our kids aren't proficient in math?
Very good computer scientists.
Maybe not.
But a question for a caveat in this, I know in our house, if, within the cultural idea of testing's coming, let's prepare. Since we do have off outs. High achieving students, do you see them opting out that skews the read down?
There's been some opt outs. Really sting my heart.
Yeah, so that's another thing for the board to consider is if our high achieving kids don't think it's important, and parents don't get support when they opt out.
And so that's one really good one to look out for, look at for off outs, um, especially since it's not required for a diploma anymore, is the high school math results, and specifically the student count call. So this year we only had eleven, eleventh graders tests out of twenty one. Last year, it's at the very bottom, we had five tests out of twenty nine. And then in twenty twenty two, high schools at the top, we had sixteen tests out of probably twenty five. And then in twenty twenty-two, high schools at the top, we had sixteen tests out of probably twenty-five.
So the question that comes out of that is the non. Um, for lack of better words, the non-involved parents who just go, didn't catch that they could opt out. So those kids are forced into taking the test.
Oh, like, I'm not, like, I don't even.
Yeah, you don't know.
I don't even see the permission form because I'm not paying attention sometimes.
Well, we did good messaging this year also on the importance of kids' state testing because it does. Can ultimately affect our funding if we don't have enough kids testing.
That's what I.
So, yeah, yeah, and you can see that difference like in eighth. Yeah, like we, our messaging definitely made an impact on the younger kids. We had twenty-six kids test this year versus fifteen last year and twenty the year before. And those were all really pretty big classes, like over twenty-five, pushing thirty. Well, so this year's class is, or this year's look incoming seniors, it's only twenty-one kids, they're our smallest.
Do we have the option of not allowing opt outs or is that?
I would love for it to be, well, here again, like when I was teaching language arts here at Duffer. I would have had for three years of state testing before COVID. And by the time they were seniors, like they were all level threes. Like, I can count on, I don't even need all five fingers on one hand to tell you how many kids had to retest in twelfth grade, like. It makes a difference for their, so hopefully the state can prioritize. And I know there's a directive to ODE to explore state testing and requirements.
And there always is, and there always is, there always will be. And that's one of the things too is that as families and we did good work this year and encouraging it's to families to encourage their kids to take the test, but some of those kids don't want to take the test. And they don't really care about.
Also, I can only speak from experience, but like I have, I have an advanced math kit. And I asked her how her math state test goes and she goes, ah, not that great. Um, I had to take the sixth grade test and I'm in seventh grade math and it's not stuff we're doing, so I just didn't know. Like, oh, okay, so I mean, that's a lot, some of the high performers particularly in math, like this isn't what we're doing enough.
Testing's tough, testing.
But what we can do is just concentrate, like there's always room for improvement and there's always goals for improvement that we can make it do for school. Like, we can complain about state logistics and how they set it up. But I think like messaging to families, incentives for students are always good things that we can improve upon. And having all of our staff on the same page with what does a math education look like for the whole child in the thirteen years they're here at Duffer School? And how do we prioritize and organize our standards by grade? And we had a really good training um with the ESD department. We'll be doing some extension of that as a small portion of our staff in mid-August. But then we're having that and to be come out and train our whole staff in standards prioritization, starting in late September. Sounds real, real riveting. We actually, we had a good, we had a good time, it was good. Take my word. That's what I had for you guys tonight.
It's kind of thick, I guess, as far as all the content, all that, just to sit here and put it back through. But to summarize it, that you're analyzing the data, you're looking at plans to try to improve it. You're looking at the test compared to the curriculum and then how it sinks all the way through the system. That's all we can ask for. Agreed, listed some things there and, you know, and say, there's conversation with parents and those types of things to help improve this. Of of even if it's just getting more kids taking the test. I mean, it's just kind of, you don't think it, no one.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we, we did some good work getting there to getting our numbers up that this year. So our messaging to families, like what we did was a good thing, but yeah, step two, okay. You're taking the test. How do we make you care about it?
Well, and we're in the cycle, it's like this, you know, the circular testing cycle where if you don't pass the test, you don't graduate. To then COVID hits and then it's like, oh, you don't have to take the test, forget about it.
Right.
And now we're back into trying to figure out what actually testing kids means.
And then they will, there'll be a big uproar.
Yeah, the, the interesting thing about math too is that most people that work in education and test it. They tell, particularly in elementary, they talk about re-reading, reading, 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 we need RTI, we need more curriculum, we need this, we need that. They don't talk about that much, or the reality is that math scores lag, they lag for a long. But statewide, nationwide behind um behind uh reading and in some schools, larger schools do.
Because if you turn to the second page. Yeah, if you turn, like math, let's just rip the bandaid, page one, but then you turn to our language arts scores, uh specifically. I say, grade eight, like that class needs some motivation. But if you look at everybody else, you're like, okay, yeah, there's an even distribution of all four colors. And look at high school, nobody scored a one.
But only eleven.
Only eleven tested, but. Yeah.
Testing's tough.
It's tough. But yeah, language arts, we are above state average performance in language arts at Duffer Schools. And then science is the last page and there's only three grades that take science. And my Nancy Wilson was emailing me when her eighth graders were taking the science test and was concerned because some of them were finishing in fifteen minutes, so. Good times. I'm done.
Comments, yeah, thanks. I think you know better than most of the rest of us as far as title, our best approach, I think so. Um, with that being said, we're gonna move into the superintendent eighty reports from Mr. Jack Henderson. Officially in the last, uh, the last time he's writing his reports.
Yes, yeah, it is, it is that time.
We're gonna get a weepy.
Are you, are you just gonna stay here for the rest of the meeting?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, I wouldn't want to miss anything. Uh, first thing I'd like to do though, one is welcome to new board members, Dave Beeson and Sean England to the board, we'll reach the July board meeting, welcome. Um, and so. Well, then I'd like to recognize a couple of board members. First one, uh, Mr. Robert Wallace, uh, Robert has been on the board for sixteen years. Um, and uh, has done a ton of work while on the board, really encourages the school to just get bigger into the grant field and into the energy field. When you look at the reality of what's happened here in the last sixteen years is it's we've, the cold grant things exploded. We get, we had, we had, you know, what, almost three million dollars in grants in the last two months. Um, and so that, that's been a huge thing, but also the energy thing has been huge. Um, Robert's had a strong influence on that, on both stuff going, providing opportunities for classroom students and things like that. And then at the board level too, just giving, giving those things, has had a huge impact on the school leadership. The speech, nice to be on, no speed.
I can continue, alright, next person I'd like to mention is Mr. Stan Ashford. Stan has been on the Duffer School District Board for forty years. Um, I've been here for, this is my thirty-eighth year, I remember the first year, we joked off and on. Um, back in the day when we would negotiate, we would negotiate like on a half percent or percent on base. Um, I remember the first year I was here, the teachers were all mad at the board, the board was mad at the teacher, I assume the board was mad at the teacher, they should have been. But uh, anyway, we had a meeting and everyone, and Sam was there, I didn't know Stan, that was forty years ago. I think Stan had been working a long time, I think a while, that guy was like, he's tired, but he wasn't tired, he had forty more years, thirty-nine more years left in him. Uh, Stan's impact is um everywhere, just the whole, the building stuff has been involved in all this building stuff that we've done through the years. The whole A thing, you had property down there, wouldn't happen without Stan, most of the farm projects wouldn't happen without Stan. He's just a amazing job, left a huge mark on the Duffer School District, wish you should make it, congratulations.
Yes, Stan, I guess, look at that, I think you're forty years old now.
I'm going for real life.
Stan actually um served for a period of time on the ESD board, right? One term, two terms, how was that?
Two or three, yeah, so he's standing early involved lots of the stuff and.
There was a different branch of politics.
Yeah. Anyway.
But thanks, guys. Uh, other stuff, I mean, just, that's really my report, just the reflection stuff that I'm proud of. The whole, the bond stuff that we've done here is amazing, but when people come here, we hosted. Eight, seven other football schools last year. People wish they have what we have, but that's really the reality of the thing. Through the good work of so many people and really the most important thing is nobody was really concerned about who was getting credit for the work that was being done. But there was really cool work being done, the three bond projects instead, just changed this place um immensely. Um, and then what else? Um, just the whole, the endowment fund thing, I mean, nobody had, schools our size don't have endowment funds with two and a half million dollars. And, and I'm assuming they're probably back up to where they were when they jumped off the cliff a couple of months ago, right? So that's really a cool thing, but we have around five million dollars in endowment funds, which is really amazing. Stan had a huge leadership, both Jerry Walker and Ranger Pride Education Foundation, um, so that was really cool. So just a fault to the district doing cool things in the future. Lastly, the football camp last week, which we'll continue to do in the future, it's a cash cow. We're gonna net probably nine thousand dollars or something for that, which means football, football programs paying for the football here, which also, which uh, makes it better for the agenda fund budget, it was amazing. And again, people come here and love being here. Last, last year, the um, Lost River folks broke down. I think Teshia must have been working at the park and Brandon, Brandon came down and got him gone, they're still talking about that. They brought some freshmen up during that classic, I think, the thing, Brandon for his work on getting them out of town. But one funny story this year, they powered the, the coaches stayed in RBs down there, both, that's true, both Saint Paul and Lost River. And a skunk found its way into one of the tents, one of the Lost River tents. And actually got, got out of the tent without doing what skunks do, that make your eyes burn. A, a number of months, that was, that was a pretty fun story, it was a great week last week. Um, and maybe a couple of weeks next year, there's so much interest in, it is a cash game, so it's good for athletic programs. Um, and our girls' basketball team was at, um, and at um, Perrydale, actually, like, well, I think actually undefeated in games, right? So that's really, really great as well, that's, thanks for having me. It was fun, stay.
Yeah, alright, well, thank you, well, let's keep moving, it looked good, appreciated that, it's the story, it was a, sure, it's on the board, we know they. I joke about the rivets on the buses, but that's kind of where it was.
There's a story to go with that.
And thanks for giving me like top buses too, I appreciate that.
Who won the vote, or the yellow, most of the white buses.
Yeah, cause the white top ones were cheaper, so I mean, the only reason.
You'll never convince, it's cheaper to pay white on a bus than to pay it all yellow, you'll never convince.
Boy, and now we're, now we're driving buses with air conditioning, we have two buses there, Casey just one. But I'm sure when my bus, which are all, which is just a different.
That's a summer school story, uh, when it was a hundred and eighteen. Yeah, it was a bus too, with the dolls, because they were doing a cool project here. And everyone was supposed to be wearing masks and there was no AC.
We had one day that um I called um the far out parents, most of the far out parents and asked them if they would be able to pick their kids up, cause you just can't stick kids in a tin can that doesn't have AC.
Just can't drive.
A hundred and eighteen, it's. And they're supposed to be wearing masks. Yeah, it was insane, luckily we have amazing parents and they were all like, of course, what else can I do to help you?
We always, we always, for a long time, had heated discussions about those drop-down chains. We'd rather have the bus driver get out, throw a set of chains on, just go a hundred feet. And uh, I mean, we had some really crazy discussions, and it made, you know, air cleaners on buses, when they drive, air cleaners, they all bad. That's back when you buy a bus for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Sound great, yeah.
That was a long time ago.
And they drive um, uh, buses out, model buses out, so the, the board would actually go out and count rivets and go for a drive. It's pretty amazing times, things have changed a little bit.
Oh, my God, uh. Right above the whole.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna go ahead and, the whole business here is of Thursday, um, it's called some J E C B. And J E C is actually AR, I'm talking about non-resident students. And so first of all, if you want them.
Okay, so.
I think that. The policy ended up before the prep sheet, I think that's what happens. Or is that right? Yeah, the policy ended up in the middle or at the end of the um consent agenda stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just, based on your guys' feedback from June second. The first J E C B is how it currently reads. And then what I've thought with your guys' feedback and it's super fancy handwritten is model sample policy. Um, we've talked about updating it, um, and so we'll just take that model policy. Make a few adjustments specifically to the kind of middle paragraph right before consent for admission. Saying that the board shall deny regular school admission to non-resident students who are under expulsion from another district for weapons or policy violation. The fourth will, based on district criteria, deny regular and alternative school education program admission for non-resident students who are under expulsion from another district. AKA, we don't wanna, if someone's been expelled, that's pretty serious, we don't want them to come to Duffer School and be a possible safety risk. Um. And then J E C B A R is the other one and I just hand wrote in the feedback we talked about in early June. I think that no later than June thirtieth of each year, the superintendent establishes the number of approximate number of non-resident students to the building. And that just allows the month of July, it says, contact families and admit any non-resident students that we have room for. And then the application for admission must go through the superintendent's office, which then would be submitted petition to the board. And then, yeah, I just, based on your feedback, like, are you saying, but what I was hearing is when we're making decisions on non-resident students, like you want the superintendent's recommendation, the board doesn't want to have to weasel through that whole list.
I guess. Yeah, so like this question, the way I would read this, the way you added it, says number one here, if we're seven. So you're saying you'd submit individuals petitions for district students or just a general?
Yeah, general numbers.
Yeah, cause it kind of reads like, which will then submit the petition to the board, like the way it reads, like it's like an individual petition and I, I don't think we can, I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
So we need to fix that, so that like, you're just consulting us as to like, how many students we're gonna prove you to let in.
Yes, right, yes, so almost omitting number four under consent for admission. Number four.
AR, AR for the J E C B A R one, number four, and then you consent for admission.
Yeah, okay, I guess it's on the next page, consent for admission. Okay. Got it, okay.
There's two spots.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was looking at the wrong section, but same, same thing.
So get rid of.
Yeah, but like, we're not, we're not approving individual students, but, but more like the concept of how many students we would admit if we're going to admit it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so however that needs to read, we need to adjust that. What we think, this makes it sound like we're gonna approve every single kid.
The board.
Not the board, it sounds like that should be due as a whole of that, right?
Don't see where this addresses, how, is it going to be a straight lottery system, which we have read about? Or are, how, how will that be?
That's a great lead in.
That's a great lead in. So any other comments on J E C B A R besides we're not petitioning?
Well, if we're, if we're gonna strike out number four at the end to where there is not a board. Um, a board approval for individuals up on the top versus by June thirtieth. Each of the superintendent will establish an approximate number of non-resident students. Uh, their respective building can accommodate for the following year upon.
Yeah, that's.
Upon, upon board approval of those, or however. Because it could be to where in the future that the superintendent has wants more funding. For particular classes, the board itself says, eh, I don't know if we want to expand that. And so there's a check and balance of.
Yes. That makes sense to add the board approval to the number that you can choose over June thirtieth. So that makes sense.
Yeah.
Does the timing make sense on that?
Timing now doesn't, it almost seems like by May thirty first.
If the board would have to approve.
Yeah. I'll just leave board approval open ended because they could do it first to June or second meeting in June, but May thirty first hard deadline for superintendent. Okay. And then, so any other?
Do, yeah, I was looking at the part about tuition. Do we have any students that come in with tuition?
No, no, we never have.
Just one student.
In my, it's my tech here, we have one fan that looked at it and then they moved to.
Okay. So is that part needed just to cover ourselves?
I think just to coverage of your anomalies, yes.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, somebody could say they're gonna pay. When we talked about in that case, we discussed it at length, that was particularly, and then didn't end up happening, but we did.
Yeah.
Talk about allowing the student and they pay the amount that the state provides. Less of the time.
Yeah, but and there are, there are families in metro areas that they've paid to.
I've heard of these.
Uh, that makes sense. Yeah.
I think Kristen Mylney feedback, and it's not really, I don't think, impacted by these policies, but it's more trying to keep up the. Who is and who isn't truly in district or out of district.
I think that's a whole nother cannon worms that we're gonna have to spend this next year.
Yeah.
Exploring like, how does the board want to audit that? It is quite like.
I just, uh. I guess for me, it's, there's kind of a few angles of it, but. Just because a kid starts in kindergarten and the family moves out of district doesn't mean necessarily they get to stay in.
Like they can stay in the remainder of the school year, but then, yeah, they notice.
Yeah, however you guys want to deal with that. I just at least having a somewhat of an accurate number on that. The board can make decisions, but they may have to be decision that next year. They're out of district now.
Yeah.
Heard through a policy similar.
Any, okay, so.
And also the general, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. Uh, also, number six.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to subsection consent for non-admission of a non-resident student by inter-district transfer, transfer. Okay.
Um. Are we, are we looking at changing that once they're admitted? Um, are we, are we keeping them forever? Do they have to reapply? Are we going to say they can be here for a year? Initially, I mean, it, it looks like we can fill in the blanks to what we wanted to, we, we need to look at that. And, and say, okay, the first year that you're in is a. Trial period and, and then reconsider whether your placement is still in place next year. It's for once they're in, they're in. Forever.
It would have to be based on the cutoff numbers, not on the individual student. If you can't legally say, yeah, we don't really like you, we don't want you here anymore.
Well, there are districts, so what I've done is included North Marion's non, non-resident transfers in guidelines. So with that, are you saying like what North Marion has in place?
Yeah, well, yeah, and policy, any, you know, people love policies and stuff, but people talk about. How great this boss is or that policy is if they don't follow. I mean, we found that issue looking at the yonder stuff. Already had all this tough talk about younger stuff and policies.
Well, what happens with the parent district, let's say district, besides, we don't want to give that kid up. Uh.
Yeah, they can, they have a release.
Well, if you read this. Thing down here, it says the length of time determined by the receiving district has to be applied the same for all students receiving it. Consent, so you can't say, we're gonna do this for.
Well, yeah.
This year and yes, the next year, it has to be the same.
Other kids do.
You can have rules that are baseline, as long as it applies equally to all kids. So you can have attendance record expectation, you can have rate expectation, you can have. As long, and if they dip below that, you can say we, we no longer, you can have yearly applications, but it's only based on. Slots available, that would be like a lottery. You can't look at any, any other factor. So we could set up if we. If someone wants to be in our district, you can say you have to have eighty five percent attendance rate or the pulling, and that just applies to everybody.
Right.
So we could skin the cat and pull much different ways is what, what is our expectations for? Is there any separation in entering like. High school and grade school and elementary. Like with this, I mean.
Like the numbers.
Kid can run with us through elementary school and high schools.
No, we don't encourage anyone. Yeah, there is, it's not graduate.
I mean, like a whole day of discussions.
Yeah, okay, Kristen, where do you want to go?
It almost.
It's the second.
Yeah, it's the second reading, so it almost seems like I need to do a little more. Thinking for you guys as far as the consent for admission specifically around like. What terms does the board want to set for students specifically around behavior, you know? Aggressiveness.
Well, I think the question is, is do we even get to? Do we get to set policy for that? Can, do we have any? Do we have those parameters that we can set? And say, just because you got the golden ticket and set grade, doesn't mean you have the gold ticket till you graduate? Or is that just what it is period? And that's. Where, you know what I'm saying?
So like if you.
Right now, if they get in in the third grade, they didn't be here till they're, till they graduate. But are we allowed to set parameters where? If they don't live up to certain expectations, you know, you're trying to improve our whole student. Our student base with attendance and with, with, you know, how they're performing. And I mean, is that even possible or, or is it, do we want to do that? Do we want to set parameters for out of district kids or? They're just in and that's it. It's a question.
Yeah, they can take state tests. They have to take the state test and a ten, nine percent of the time.
Yeah, you want mandatory opt in.
Score a bubble.
I know, no, it's not at all.
If we set a limit on how long, and I don't know the answer to this, if we set a limit on how long they're accepted for. Do they have to be re-released?
I don't think you can. I think the law currently says that once they're released, they're released.
That's what, and that's why, yeah.
But, but then that's subject to change and.
But if they want to go back to their home district, their home district has to take them back.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. They, yeah, they, they can't say no if they live in.
So the final um page I have for you is. North Marion School District's Non-Resident Transfer in Guidelines. So I guess there's like, yeah, it's like, what can be interpreted as guidelines? Is that set in stone? Is it just, yeah, it's so tricky. But they do have a board that recommends for transfers in. For until the end of next school year. So they have their parameters, um, and but they do. Terms of agreement for athletics, which. Whatever, um, specifically I looked at attendance and behavior, so making sure. Holding inter-district transfer students to a standard of ninety one, about a percent attendance and then they. For also their behavior. Um, no more than one suspension for academic year, no suspension of five days or more and no expulsion. So it's pretty tight. On the behavior, which I like.
But the things Kristen, one, maybe spend a little bit of time on legal aspect, because he is guidance there. May help provide some direction, then, you know, next week, you're gonna have a couple, maybe one of the first, you may have a couple new. Thoughts that come up, so maybe I have to go for three or something to get it worked out to the point. Where you need it to be.
And that's okay.
And uh.
I don't want to rush.
I guess, are you with what you have here? Are you set? Or start?
Yeah, because we do have a policy in place. I know that we just wanted to tighten up our dates and then we really had some good discussions around like. Expectations for these students, so they're not coming in and digging us on attendance or coming in and. Asking a bunch of problems for teachers and John and Tess, so I'll look at some legal stuff and send you guys some more info.
Yeah, because it may be, you know.
But we do have a policy in place that we've been working on.
Yeah, doesn't mean that you can't even adopt policies suggested and then continue working on it, bring it back in. Eight months or whatever and look at it again at the next.
Yeah, like how did it end up being facilitated?
And it, and just like, some of the dates just may help you with the management of working.
Yeah, they just keep it a little bit tighter. So, okay, so that's our second reading. I'll look at the, the legality stuff around guidelines for next time. Um, I do think. So. So, sorry, let me get back on track. So as of five twenty eight, I also had, there's additional information that goes along with this for you guys to have eyes on. Um, we have our incoming classes. By A D M R, remember is um average daily membership regular, so actual students at desk. Versus A D M W, that's um. Average daily membership weighted, so students have more of a weight, for example, if they are in special education. So our incoming kindergarten class is at twenty one, but with A D M W is actually at twenty four. Is how you read that. List. Any questions on that?
So the split classes are second at six.
Second, fourth and sixth.
Oh, yeah.
I just, you know, one thing that stands that I recall from the conversation on this last name is that A D N W was useful, but it's not the end all, the end all.
Yeah.
Definitely helps give them the next step in the. If that makes any sense. Okay, it can be in speech and go to speech or happen, and we can. Yeah. Student.
Okay, and then, so do you think else? So. As of five, six, you've got a list of our incoming classes that's really broken down into. Total students, male, female, in district, out of district, tax bed. Five oh four, we looked at that last time. And then the last page is new to you guys. The one with the checkboxes in the middle. This is our inter-district. Transfer waiting list as of. I don't, as of me prepping and thinking we were gonna meet on June twenty third, so probably like June twenty, June eighteenth or something. So we have. Eight kindergartners on our waiting list. You can see if I've checked if they already have a sibling going here. Um, if. And if they have a parent or guardian who is, who is a staff member here. You can see the current size of in-district students, and then I made a couple notes about if I were recommending. Admitting how many I would be recommending.
And so what's, are these staff children not currently here or?
Correct. We have a new staff member who is um. And they get a, and they have two students.
Have we ever said no to a staff member?
No.
No, but I can recall. And that's what I say, we're worried about it and I told them they. If you're a staffer or you're waiting, let's kids move straight to the top of the list, like we want, we want to retain our staff members and.
Shouldn't put that in the house.
It's not the policy.
We have siblings who we don't have.
Yeah.
Staff.
Yeah. And so the check marks are those students who have siblings who are already in other districts and have been admitted.
Yes.
If their parent works here, do they still have to be released from their home district? Is there?
Yes. Okay, so I'm coming back to earlier discussion, just on parents, because Janet kind of. Mentioned this, what is our system? So we go through this, say you're recommending to for kindergarten. And then as you look at this list, what would, how would we select which to the offers made to?
Well, in this case, it's the ones who have siblings.
In this case, there are two that have siblings.
So they already have that. For our current policy.
Kind of a parent staff, sibling, and then.
And then it's just if there was a room, then it would be first come, first served, right?
Correct.
Based on.
Yeah, we go based on when they got our waiting list.
When they go.
And if they have a release, so we have some people that are on our waiting list that don't have a release, so they're, if they, they don't get a release from their. District, then their ask is invalid.
Do they have to submit that with the application? I mean, because they don't.
There's not really an application, they fall and we get.
Well, it's like they don't want to get the release if they don't know they're.
No, it doesn't mean any, yeah, it doesn't mean that you won't go if you don't get in here, that you won't be admitted. Yeah. Yeah.
And they don't get a release directly to do, but they get.
Yes.
Because kids from Dallas won't be given either too.
Yeah.
And that's the, yeah, that's the other thing too, to which just something to keep an eye on, the Dallas has been releasing thirty kids a year until this year, this year was fifteen, they have a lady fifteen. So they don't may continue to go down.
But they're choosing not to release.
Correct, yeah. They got themselves in a bind three years ago, so they're gonna be released to limited, publicly spoken, and they changed that.
Did the releases carry over? So like if they got released in twenty four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Releases are released.
Okay.
Yeah, the release stays, but if they want to go back, they go back.
Yeah.
We don't have to release the back.
No, I mean, if we didn't, if they were released and we didn't take them, so they stayed in the Dallas for the year, it's still, they still stay at least.
Right for kindergarten, file for release. You know. Anything else on this?
These recommendations? That's.
It's not on the agenda, so I think.
This is just a second reading.
Yeah.
No, but like the, the actual list of students that you have.
Yeah, I only requested policy on the agenda and I should have, I guess, put under new business. Like.
Do it in July.
Approve, so we can do it on July fifteenth.
Anytime, immediate week. Right?
In like two, so that's fine.
So. Yeah, I mean, there's the next meeting on the seventh.
Yeah.
The fifteenth, I think.
Is that what we decided?
Yeah.
Usually don't have it July. It's not even on my calendar.
Oh, man, yeah, I think it can, it's fine to wait. The fifteenth, Tuesday. Tuesday.
Well, yeah, I would say, you know, get that, I was suggesting is get that on the agenda and let the board have time. Have conversations, see if that's what they want to do and maybe push it a little bit for time, but then you still got action and I'm sure that. Folks would be appreciative, at least noting by that.
I think, yeah, that's who's affected the most is people who just want to know, yes or no, but we have to. Do it legally and have it on our agenda, so.
Cool, thank you. We've been to move, move on. You don't get about that, Kristen, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, uh, next time on uh the agenda here is approved, dreamy elementary teacher. And this was, um, yeah, this was, this was developed out of a discussion that I last month.
Yeah, this was, this was developed out of the discussion that I last month.
Was this, which is spurred by a discussion that will be. So, I'm gonna get a chance to kind of read it, this is for, this is for. Uh, you know, the classroom for the twenty five, twenty six school year of a, an M O U or standing between the district. In her uh, concerning her return to work following her maternity leave in school council.
It's all like a motion to.
I act, actually add something. Um, Mrs. Ford came and talked and means one of the district were paid for her credits while she's. Could that be happened to this?
Those are cancel.
Her, 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 her education, which her pursuit is canceled. Yeah, yeah.
Well, we've been, have we been paying for her credits up till this point?
We have this.
Since she was fully.
We have that, yes.
Now she's.
We can also do that as a separate. Item too, so.
Yeah, I feel like we don't know.
That, I can, for this, we can just have a workout. Okay, so it's July. It might be in July.
Yeah.
I don't know, but we need to know, snap right away, that's gonna be tricky.
When it comes down to it, it comes down to the C B A.
So what?
The collective bargaining.
Yeah, and that's what I would, we need to review.
Yeah. Your own leave, I guess, my question.
Right, so does our C B A have anything about on leave? And if not?
Cuz if you're on leave, you're supposed to be not. So.
And so where, like, is resources, tuition reimbursement?
You're also getting free counseling.
Well, no, I'm just.
Yeah, I know.
Is the other benefit. Right, and what does that? And making this kind of like this.
To setting precedent.
Yeah, what, what precedent are you setting for the people who are under contract?
Yeah, I'm talking about, we're not to her, there she's on maternity leave and she's gonna just school. I, I have.
Yeah, where does, where is, where is the word lines between, like, where maternity and stops, like, is it a fall?
You're on maternity leave, you're not lost to be working some other, well, that all, while they're also.
Yeah.
There's three limitations on.
That's right, I'm gonna suggest that we, for tonight's purposes, focus on this. And just trying to see if they need it, we want somebody to spice on that, so it was a thing, thing to probably bring back July, kick everything to July, July fifteenth. The Tuesday, so, I don't know, Stan, if you wanna make connection on this.
Yeah, finally gotten paid, uh, make a motion to approve the agreement with Judy Ford as attached. Not enough that includes the two, two, two different issues that.
It didn't.
It didn't.
Just what's on.
Just of it. Just your red.
Yeah.
That's what we discussed.
We have a motion for the.
A second.
Any further discussion? All right, so we got a motion and a second, uh, approving, approving the agreement with Mr. Paul's attached. Man, always in favor of that motion, signify by same night, I, I, any opposed? So that motion passes, yeah, I would think, we'll just be a little, um, around the other credit piece. Stop to see where that ends.
Yeah, I believe definition.
Okay, I'm gonna keep moving, third is okay with that. First, we just keep. Patent stuff on you.
Yeah, and it might, I mean, in all honesty, July is a very special meeting, so we're not gonna do everything under the sun. But our priority is board elections and the functions of the board training. So there's some stuff that will be August, so. Just as other than.
Yeah, I won't let you too. You won't voice the nature. And okay, so next on the list is uh, I'm three-year-old business policies, J B I, S C R, uh, I G D F, I G D F dash, we are district fundraising, this is the second reading for those items. You know, I have about the last, I have about the first reading, that's why I like a discussion on some of this stuff, and I think for me, left feeling better about some of the work that have been involved in policy. Any comments on this? So. Bye.
Yeah. I, I know that there's that.
And, oh, definitely. Anything specific, I haven't had a chance to take a look at this. July.
It's for August, this is probably August, so. I don't think. I think the only thing Janice or Art have is um the Duffer School District Draft, the last one, fundraising activity request and verification. I accidentally put in the original. One and my updated one has um some, some, some checks and balances with the Art Chair.
Oh, so this one.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Great, keep moving, somebody has anything else on this? And I guess if you do, you know, reach out to Kristen and share your thoughts with her and stuff.
Yeah.
So that hopefully, that's better come together, working to you next time. But I'm, I'm gonna move into new business, and we're gonna start off by gratifying wage increase for certified staff. And they seen three.
Yeah, yeah, you remember, we offered the certificate, certificate of staff three percent for the time of school year. We recall that we agreed on a three-year agreement of language and stuff. Excuse me, but not online, just to be, enter that sign, how much the state is gonna provide, state and federal is gonna provide, things like that, so the board couple months ago on staff three percent and they accepted that, so they just need to accept that in front of them. Again, for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Just for what we're, yeah, for just for my.
Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
The rat, right, three percent increase on salary, but by staff. So.
Twenty six.
Stands for this, um, any further discussion? On this. That falls in favor, I gratifying three percent increase for certified staff, signify by same night. Any opposed? But she passes. And thank you, um, adopting appropriate, uh, appropriate the twenty five, twenty six district budget. So.
I handed out.
This is a handout, okay, it's fine.
The resolution. Twenty five dash zero one. Adopt and appropriate and impose the taxes.
And I just, uh, is there any adjustments to this than what the budget committee put through?
Um, there were minor tweaks, um. For, we finally got our actual purse rights, so that changed it a little bit, um. In June.
Right.
I know.
And then didn't we get additional thirty thousand from O D U from their original estimate?
Yeah. Yeah. So our first cost, our first cost actually went up from almost in the budget. Um, and then, but we got a little bit extra state school fund money. I think that actually came out yesterday, or not yesterday, last week. So there's some adjustments in here. It's nothing major.
At least, at least the income.
Yeah, and a little bit more expenditure in the first cross, across the board, so. It's always fun.
You're only entertaining motion. To adopt and appropriate twenty five, twenty six district budget.
I'll make a motion to adopt appropriate, um, resolution, but one that's attached. We'll say again.
Okay, so that's enough, about budget, and set that tree. Okay, uh. We had a motion, and motion, Jan, a second, any further discussion? And calls in favor, uh, approving motion, uh, adopting the budget for three, appropriate, adopting for the twenty five, twenty six district budget, signify by same height.
Right, right.
Any opposed? Two passes. Yes, yes. Uh, next on agenda, hire certified staff. So we got two bills on here, we do, and Kristen has a second question.
Thanks, okay, um, so with Tess coming on as principal, that leaves an open looping teaching position in our elementary, which is going to be in second grade next year, our youngest split class. And so we conducted interviews in May of several candidates and um my recommendation for higher with support from my hiring committee is Cara Odell. She currently teaches kindergarten at Chin with Elementary. Um, and then we also have with Ty Wenzel leaving. Uh-oh. I'm missing one, I don't know what to do about that. Um, so with Ty Wenzel leaving and us moving more into a six through twelve position or six through twelve model, we interviewed several candidates for a six through twelve STEM teacher, primarily teaching math and science. And uh, the hiring panel, as well as myself, recommend the hire of Deanna Zalasnik for our six through twelve STEM teacher. Um, Deanna also has extensive experience teaching Spanish, which is a huge win for our district and the availability of in-person foreign language instructions to students. And then because he is a staff member, I think I just emailed you, I didn't email you George Peterson, cuz he already works here.
On July.
July. Yeah. But we, um, with uh, Nicole Ryan leaving mid-year, needed to fill our language arts, um, and a little bit of social studies. And we have a current educational assistant who was one of many interview pool. And George Peterson, who did a lot of work with our fourth and fifth grade graders this year, this was his first year at Duffer School, but prior to that, he has um, over twenty years' experience teaching uh, social studies up in Alaska, so I will be recommending hire George Peterson or recommending. We've already hired him, but the transfer of George Peterson from classified to certified staff. So we'll. So we'll do that. We'll allow it.
It won't really impact him, cuz he won't go to duty until.
Seven percent, well, the last.
Perfect, all right. Um, I'd be willing to entertain a motion for hiring of the two individuals that are listed on the sheet, and then the third individual, so we'd probably notice, uh, they'll hold off and that official hiring until the next school.
Can I, I have one quick question, um. We had talked a little bit in the past about, um making sure that as many of our teachers are teaching in their in their lane, in their, their poor curriculum is what they're teaching in, are, are these you said that he was a social studies teacher, he's not an English teacher.
But he hasn't been, or what are we, we're moving this position from just six or just middle school through six through twelve, so he's gonna be teaching a mix of language arts and social studies. So we discussed, like, there's some contingencies on his um, contract with Duffer School that he needs to have his Alaska license transferred to an Oregon license. Um, and then as far as adding endorsement to your license, that's a lot less of a bigger deal than getting your license in the first place. So he'll add his language arts endorsement to his Oregon license. And that involves.
Most of these certified for multiple subjects.
Middle schools, multiple subjects, he's only teaching one high school class on the schedule, and that's economics, which falls under social studies, so.
Yeah. And then uh, for Deanna, is she a STEM teacher?
She has certifications in science and, yeah, you can have multiple, yeah, you can have multiple endorsements on your license. So like just using myself and as, as an example, I started out with just a uh like, a language arts endorsement for grade six through twelve. But then I added my social studies endorsement, like, two years of the teaching, and because I was teaching enough class, like, you have to just teach a certain amount of your day um, to get your hours to get your endorsement, and usually we build that into a schedule.
I guess, I mean, just from my standpoint, I'm just, you know, looking at looking at test scores, looking at, you know, how the kids are doing, just making sure we're doing everything we can to make sure that the teachers are well versed in the, the um the classes that they're teaching, so our kids are getting the best, so.
And that's why I had a really strong panel of due for staff members helping me make that decision, so afford over endorsements and experience and brought the best candidates forward. Great.
We have one more question.
I make a motion to hire Cara Bell as a secondary teacher and hire Deanna Zalasnik as a six through twelve STEM teacher.
Also, Stan's been saying. Further discussion in this. Yeah, I appreciate your comments, I just wanna say mindful on how certified teacher, to be a certified teacher. Tuned in to the coursework, which I'll be teaching, hopefully they have tips and tricks to provide the best instruction. So thank you, Kristen, for involving in some of your eighteen, that's telling you that with the hopes that we get the best candidates, you know. Get at least one of these candidates on this list we've uh been talking to for a while, so it's nice to see them make that decision, can teachers, they're stellar teachers, so. Thank you for your work, and, but that being said, uh, always in favor of, um, approving the hiring elementary teacher as well as STEM teacher, signify by same height, I, I, any opposed? She passes, let those two know that they're not have to wait.
Yeah, he's just already works here.
Uh, okay, uh, next on the list here, as far as honoring board member, I gotta turn this over to Mr. Anderson. Find some information on what he's got.
Thank you, um, we discussed this last month, talked about the um, the legacy that Stan leaves as a board member and, and the school vision. He's, you know, been on board for forty years, that's pretty, certainly has to be one of the very, very few in our nation that uh, is on board for that period of time, and that, he didn't just sit there and keep the chair, he, he did pull stuff throughout. Um, and uh, he'd be very fitting to discuss last month to the other, the Ashburg Day building. So, I would love to do that, plan with that, as if we do a do a little dinner in here on August eighth at six P M, uh, and then actually have some, have some speakers there. Um, because again, and I said earlier about the, um, just the, the fact, how involved Stan was in everything uh, here, that, that's been due for school in the last four years, the whole, um you know, the development of the endowment funds, all these uh, construction projects have, so Stan, Stan isn't know all that, so this is very, very fitting, I think, to properly understand each person's legacy and the.
Or a lot of people.
No, no. Forty years, forty years.
I would like to interject maybe a name for the building, um, I don't know if everybody had, or had about. But I, I don't know if it even, it's the right wording or not, but I just saw Stan has broke industrial arts building. Is that involved, is that part of industrial arts? I think it's, it's kind of professional. But they were just like. But thank you, so, so humbling. You know, I mean, I've been, I've seen a lot of I was part of the board, there's tremendous things around here, like I said, twenty percent of that. Uh, and there's some, there's some hard nights and there's some really good you know, but man, you, you'll never know the battles, but the and, and where we ended up. You know, but man, you, you'll never know the battles, but the, and, and where we ended up. You know, that just we did it one day at a time. And boy, there were battles when we weren't very popular guys or any sort of people, I should say, at all, physically. It's amazing, it's just amazing, but our board has been very diversified. And who they are as individuals over those years and we're very solid. Uh, of our administration and our, and our finances, you know, we've, we believed in all those folks and uh. You know, Mr. Henderson, this amazing guy, he came here as a P E teacher. You know, snotty nose, big mouth, or foul. You know, but we refine him now, but anyway, you know, it just, I appreciate it, I mean, I really do, because I had no. And I, I just had, it's just very humbling and uh. But I'm very, I'm very appreciative of it, uh, for, sure, considering me for that, but. Mr. Henderson was a big player in this, you know, he had thirty years, thirty eight years to. Polish his skills a little bit, you know, there are a lot of stories to go with that too, but. Uh, I, you know, it just was ama- amazing run. Uh, it just was, and we can be proud of this facility, and you know. Reason people want to be here, because we, we've done a good, the board has done a really good job. Thinking about education, what's the best for the students. Uh, about the community and as the staff. You know, this is a big family, they think about every kid they think about, and now Kristen's coming up with these. All these things, identifying any, any kid that will take a test, you could walk that, through that kid all the way through to grade school and high school. You can see the progress, they're going eleven up or, you know, hopefully you have ninety percent, but you, you could actually track each one of those kids, so I mean, that's just the best thing. I, I'm excited for you and your good adventure and what information you'll have for the community and for the board, I think it's just another. It's just another level of uh, uh, what we're gonna do should be good here, so anyway. Uh, I look forward to watching the show and, and thank you for the ride, it's a great ride, so thanks again.
You want to accept a motion? And yet the buildings, we're gonna let the name, the final name, the name that was recommended was the stand of Stan Ashbrook Industrial Arts Building.
I make a motion to name the upper building the Stan Ashbrook Industrial Arts Building.
I think Tim's there first.
Let's see, I think, yes, Tim's gonna say, alright. Uh, any further discussion?
I'll bury the lantern, babe.
Sixteen feet tall.
They're gonna be white on the roof.
Neon, okay?
No.
I was wondering. One, one, one thing that we didn't, one thing that I haven't mentioned today, I mean, to the whole, um, Stan's role of all merger, because many. Maybe the majority of people in our school district right now don't know, and they probably think the Duffer School District always was from here to, or from. Ty Ridge to Eight Mile, it, it hasn't been, that was part of the merger in school, and Stan's really influential in that. Stan did not have a lot of friends in the room when it was one to four, yeah, we should do this merger with the Theodore's Big School, but frankly, it's maybe the best thing we've done. That's, it's a huge, it's been, it's been a huge thing for our school, there's programs in this district that would never happen if, if that happened, happened. The other thing too is the, the, one of the things that I'm amazed and proud of is the, the relationship that we have with people at Slaila. Um, because they, um, prior to the merger with the Duffer School District, a student friend. President of Slaila had not graduated from high school in fourteen years, so now residents of Slaila graduated, we have great relationships with.
As they didn't want to come here. It was up the river, they didn't want to go up the river.
Well, they'd been coached up that it was gonna be bad for them and stuff, and now, now if you told them they had to go to someone else, then it would be a fucking different. Anyway, it's a huge thing.
Stan, thank you for your service. We'll look forward to the evening of Friday, August eighth. And that, but what I'd like to do first is get a vote on this, so. So all is in favor of uh, approving the motion is stated, signify by saying I. Any opposed? Very nice, alright, well, chance to ask this. I'm quite remember who's gonna, who's gonna make the motion, that's good. Yeah, thank you, Stan, appreciate all your, your years of service and. Uh, you were on the school board when I was in high school, and they need to serve on the board if you.
I think my daughter Julie was like three or four years old or one, one year old, yeah. The long.
And then I, I had this guy as my, I had a G and P teacher, so.
Teacher, teaching multiples.
Alright, better get back to business, yeah, do I just laugh, we shouldn't, it's gonna get, next on the list here is, uh, talking about fire aluminum system. And the proposal with the quote in there to move forward with purchase, so.
Okay, uh, we, this has been an issue for us for. A number of years, and we've kind of been living along with the system, and having, frankly, got to a point, you know. Further with the system we have, so. Um, we have a estimate from um, from asset to do the install of that system for. To just over sixty thousand dollars. My glasses somewhere, sixty four seven five five, right?
Yep.
And so, and this, this money will take in front of um, contingency, um, if it has to be, we have some other money that we can move over to. Purchase the system as well, this needs to happen and so.
I will personally attest to meeting this, as will Andrea, she lives in our office.
This will be still buzzing. It's gonna be out of the next year's. And then, I guess, just on a finance side, Josie, coming out of contingency with this, and is there?
Um, we, we are working on some grant funding and things, unfortunately. We're at a point where it really doesn't matter, we're just gonna have to eat it out of the budget if we can't get a pay for it.
Assume it's already been discussed, but there's anything that needs to be combined with the system, meaning whether running the wiring and the P A system or?
Um, we've actually looked at other things that won't need wiring line for the P A system, so we did look at it and opted out of that.
Okay. Just make sure it's considered while you're moving forward, okay? You may want to make a motion on this, without further discussion. Make a motion to. Approve the attached proposal from asset for sixty four thousand seven hundred fifty five dollars for new fire alarm system for Duffer School.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I want to ask a question on like the bid, bid process. Call around and get three bids for this and following the procedure with that, just to ensure plans.
Uh, we, we did not on this one, sadly, because this is, this is the only business in the area, yeah, they can, because we, one, one of our problems. With that system that we've had, and this is always, I don't know how old it is, but it's always not into, uh, and we've never been able to get anybody to come out here and work on it. That's the thing with asset being involved. I thought it was like, emergency situation, we should go forward with.
Yeah, are they doing phone systems, so to, are they working in ways or? Yeah, we got a um, motion in a second, any further discussion in this? And this means that, I mean, will be installed. Anything else?
Yeah, good.
Uh, all is in favor of making purchase of this. New firearm system. Further be attached for asset, I assume five, I say nine, nine, any opposed? She passes. Yeah, I'd heard about this for a long time, we can do something, you can just, that's nothing, for the health and safety of folks in this building.
Yes, let's, let's spell them.
Same we've had on the agenda here. Is the uh, approved the resolutions and this, this has to do at the end of the year. Um, and budget command, so.
This is just a comment, this is, school districts do this, this is what school districts are doing, we had some discussion last week. About it being inappropriate, it's not inappropriate, the Dow School District adopted for. Um, uh, budgets later. So, they supplemental budgets last week, that's what school districts do. Before we talk about budget. And budget, but, budgets are estimates, and if you budget this amount of money coming in, and sometimes more money comes in.
You know, I just can't see in the other boards I sit on, it's pretty, I couldn't see this, especially towards the end of the year, sometimes it'll be something that comes in. Before they receive substantial additional dollars and stuff, it has to be properly documented for. The process, yeah, it kind of doesn't, so, so it looks like we got uh, three of them here in front of us. Twenty four oh five, seven oh nine, twenty four oh six. Four oh seven, that's just one hundred and. So, uh.
Now, after natural use transfers were still four hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Yes.
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 That's a big, big difference.
Yes, I did all of the maths in there to make, show you what it is after I do this. Um, uh, I will take them kind of one by one, first resolution twenty four oh five is a contingency transfer in the general fund. Um, the bulk of which is to instruction, um, just to, I mean, obviously cover additional expenses in, um. That we hired three additional EAs this year, three additional EAs this year, uh, is the bulk of that piece, so. Just funding mechanism, and we have that money appropriated, we just need to approve the transfer, the rest of it, um, goes to support services and. Is, we have plenty of money built into support services. Mostly funny, we've built into support services, and this covers the additional, um, two positions that we hired that go, that voted there. Uh, so that's the first one, the second one is contingency transfers in the special revenue funds, um, for a couple of reasons. Again, we had contingency built in, it is appropriated, uh, we need to transfer thirty thousand dollars to instruction. Mostly to cover, um, we received a hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, S S A grant actually, which is. Kind of interesting, but, um, and that will cover our curriculum purchase, we're purchasing K through second grade, yeah, like this one with that money. Um, and then uh, thirty five thousand dollars to enterprise and community services, which in reality. Um, because we're a custodian of funds for the A S B and Jerry Walker and Ranger Bright, um, we do. Journal entries at the end of the year to encompass all of the spending for those three different funds, and. The great news is they have more money to spend this year, um, meaning we need to transfer contingency to account for all of those expenditures. So those are the contingency transfers. Supplemental budget is in the general fund, this deals with the additional preschool promise dollars. Um, like I said, we had a hundred and seventy thousand dollars budgeted for that, we can appropriate because this grant is. Relegated to specific expenditures, um, and so it's just the additional hundred and sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars of that grant. Um, I will say. I'm sorry, it's year two and I am still learning local budget law, um, and I. Thought that I knew what I was doing, and that I didn't need to advertise that, because it was a different situation than we had last year, where we had to do a sub, a budget hearing. Um, and turns out I was wrong, and so we actually would not have been over expended if we would have passed Monday, this. And over expend those funds until after last Monday, but, because we had to push the meeting back. We ought to wear brass.
Yeah, I just, you know, I would just say, from my perspective, I'd much rather you take a minute. And ask for advice and do it right, and push them forward, get us into a situation after that, I think, so. Uh, mind my no polishing, apology needed, I appreciate taking this time and reviewing these and then reaching out to your advisors. You know, the folks in this industry that know this, and uh, like you say, it, it sure is probably a little bit different. We gotta do and.
Lesson learned. Well, and like one final comment, like I called. Our, our Congress for Law about the. Local budget law posting, and this is a big problem for a lot of rural districts, like we only have one newspaper in our area. That publishes on paper, and that's the situation that a lot of these rural districts are in, so it looks like legislation is actually. And tweaking that.
And publishes once a week.
Yeah, and it doesn't publish every day, so it really puts a lot of, lots of rural people, it puts a lot of rural people in mind. I mean, let's be realistic, it publishes in Hood River. Yeah. So, anyway, that's where we're at, that's the three resolutions.
So we got three resolutions in a. We could try to take care of all in one motion, if that's what it shows, or we could break apart. I'd be willing to accept a motion. Get started, if we want to take it all. Everybody, I think that should. I have a second on that. Uh, further discussion, any questions on these specific items?
The most will show the exact number of stretch.
Yeah, so they reflect uh, description as attached. Any further questions or discussion?
No, the discussion this week for me is just looking local budget law, and then it's perspective, and I, now that I have the explanation. Is taxpayers gonna mean, like, how did we fund that, and usually my answer is, I don't know, I guess we'll see at the end of the year, so. Thank you for working through and giving me the answers where I can go, okay, that, that makes sense with the coding and the function within that. Uh, so that way, when someone asks me, I go, this is how it works, so.
Well, there's so many unknowns based on, probably kids are there at the end of the year versus, you know, there's just so much of a variable. Uh, right now, the last day of June.
It is, yeah, it's frustrating to say the least, especially as we can't just make more money like a business can, just get what we get.
But we have been, we just with, with grants and stuff, which further complicates.
Complicates this, but.
Right services for kids and families, and it's a, it's a net benefit, but it becomes a little strange.
What you do, what do you do, let's say a grant shows up, there, or you get the Blair Pala Grant first, first of page. There's a pair of fifty thousand dollars, then you have till the fifteenth of May to get that in to see if you get the money, so let's say. You apply, you get it, there's nothing in the budget that supports it, so then you go in, just like you did on the preschool thing. You do that supplemental money, you get turned, well, it's a terrific thousand dollars in common, the expense. For your, your budget, or put together budget for that, so that, it's really how your days go.
Well, I mean, honestly, and we had room within our special revenue funds to do it, but. We got, um, summer, what do they call it, summer learning, a summer learning grant, is that what they call it, anyway. Literally like numbers, the third week of June. Yeah, oh, we're gonna give you this much money, you have to spend it by June thirtieth, no.
A lot of districts turned down.
Um, a lot of districts turned down because they couldn't, yeah, get the people in place and do things, and so.
Not us.
I actually have a check that we printed today that I'm waiting to sign. Until things are approved, because it's fast, so, yeah, the, the funding mechanism is strange, and O D is doing the same thing. They're like in June going, ooh, we have money, let's spend it, please help us.
Well, thank you all over there for your aggressiveness.
How many different fundos streams were involved in such a, some different grants?
Three, I think, two, yeah.
Yeah.
Four.
Then they took one away, so back.
No, but we got most of it, because we got fifty some thousand, so we have the S S A grant, we have the summer learning grant, we have K T I funds. And. No, but we got most of it, because we got fifty some thousand, so we have the S S A grant, we have the summer learning grant, we have K T I funds, and. There was three, there was another one.
And that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about, three, three or four.
But you can always get that email, mandatory disbarment from this grant, like we're taking it away, yeah, oh, great.
Well, and a couple of years ago, a person was employed at E S D at that point in time. All offered was, was it fifty thousand dollars to start with? And it ended up, it ended up being a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Well, which is huge.
Yeah.
So it happens, but I think. I mean, our team's done a great job of pursuing grants and that stuff, so, somebody asked me about that, if that's. Solid moving forward, that's all, well, it really is, and you have to, and, I mean, we're getting grants that we're getting national attention on, that. Didn't take all that long to apply for, so.
Long you don't spend them before you get them.
Well, and we will see.
Create a problem.
Yeah.
Now that I know things, we'll see earlier supplemental budgets for next year already, I know a couple of things and.
But, but the reality of school districts, like I said, the Dow's adopted four, if not five last week.
Yeah.
It just.
Well, they want to work away from four million dollars, so. The neighboring districts themselves, we can, we take that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just encourage the district to continue to advance grant opportunities and properly go through process to, you know, to accept that money if it makes sense. All will. There's a lot of money. Well, we have a motion on the floor, then by Ann, and seconded by Stan, so it's through the three resignations, um. Two, twenty four oh five. Ten percent transfer, we can work on the five hundred, twenty four oh six, continuing to transfer the special revenue funds. Twenty four oh seven, from under general fund, so, uh, all those in favor of that motion, signified by saying, I.
I.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes, okay. Um, that's all the items on the agenda, I just wanted to. Uh, remind the board and new board members, um. You'll be building on uh, board positions and at July meetings, you guys be thinking about that, and then Kristen, you have, is the training set up? For them.
Yeah, so we'll vote on board positions, there were a few items tonight that we're carrying over and off all, and then we'll probably have some, um. Like, extra duty contracts to vote on. And then we will do functions of the board training with O S B A.
So it's gonna be a pretty active meeting and then. For the new board members, you know, welcome. Thank you, have fun, and. And uh, I, you know, I kind of. You know, it's just a lot to kind of catch up on, I, you know, to the existing returning board members, you know. Everything you can is trying to help, and just get out of Sweden and stuff, it takes a lot to get there, so. Okay, that being said, meeting adjourned.